Good evening. The City Council Meeting of May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five is hereby called to order at six oh three P M. The invocation will be led by the city clerk.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray that you guide us always and satisfy the needs and needs to be met during this meeting. Please provide strength to the council as to make tough decisions. Help us work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask this in your love and name. Amen.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who is a military veteran or currently serving in the military? Please stand or raise your hand so that we may recognize you. Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez, uh, Mr. Rodriguez for your service. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to please stand for the flag salute that will be led by David Secuentes.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you, David. Will the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Councilmember Farfan?
Here.
Councilmember Roa? Councilmember Vargas? Mayor Pro Tem Del Rio?
Here.
Mayor DePaula?
Here.
We have the quorum.
Will the city clerk please provide brief information relating to public comments?
There are several ways a member of the public may participate during public comment. A member of the public may submit a public comment via written correspondence or by submitting an e-comment through the city's website. Another way to participate is through our Zoom option. The Zoom meeting ID and passcode are in the agenda packet. Meeting ID number is eight four three nine six eight zero five eight zero five. Passcode is capital letters H G one. Lastly, a member of the public may participate in person at the city council chamber. Public comment is now open.
Good evening, Mayor, um, City Council and city staff. My name is Jesus Mendoza. I live at twenty-two zero twenty-two St. Avenue in the city of Hawaiian Gardens, and I want to make reference into our, um, Robert Canada Friendship Powwow. I just want to read a little statement that I would, that, um, historical from our powwow. Um, Hawaiian Gardens Mayor Robert Canada, which, uh, was a Native American, understood this and gave the Tonga, which is the natives that used to live here, a voice and a place in the city, uh, to gather and practice our culture. Robert had the Christmas Powwow in the winter and the Friendship Powwow in the summer. When Robert, uh, was dying, he made Jimmy Castillo the special leader of the Tonga. Promised to keep the Powwow and going to keep the Tonga presence in Hawaiian Gardens. Jimmy not only lived up to his word, but he also brought the statewide Bear Clan to the powwow as a gift to the city of Hawaiian Gardens in order to give healing ceremony to the people. People throughout Hawaiian Gardens came to the ceremony for healing and many trying to reconnect to their indigenous roots. At one time, the city was proud of representing native people. And now, and the powwow was allotted as one of the best in Southern California. The powwow and the bear ceremonies are the last voice in the Tonga have left in Hawaiian Gardens. To stop the powwow means the city of Hawaiian Gardens is contributing to the cultural extension of the Tonga and will silence the voices in Hawaiian Gardens forever. Basically, what I'm asking is, I know that, uh, I've been part of the powwow since, since day one, uh, for all the years. And we're just asking in support from the city council, city staff, um, and to narrow it down on the dates where that were considered, which is in August, Saturday sixteenth and seventeenth. And, um, then we could deal with everything else. Um, uh, we know how to run it. We know how to do it. Um, we just need the blessings from both the city council and obviously, you know, Francisco Niolas here as a, uh, representative from the school district, which is on school district nine. Uh, so we could get the blessings from both. Uh, my brother here, Renee. If you guys have ever been to our powwow, Renee has been there with us. He's one of the firekeepers and he's also now a wingman. And so he has his feather. He has everything. Um, he could do blessings and he could say a couple of words and then there, and maybe a blessing for everyone here. So I appreciate that, um, you guys would consider and allowing us so that way we could start meeting. Um, like I, like I mentioned, we could start doing that, but we just need a, a date. That's a set day, not a tentative day. And staff, city staff and so forth. We will not need any city staff until we will come back here with you guys if you would like. And then we'll deal with that. Appreciate it. So I don't know if Renee wants to say something.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Um, yeah, I, as Jesus said, I started off as a fire tender here back in two thousand and five, right? Um, I always thought I was just following the old man around, which is our spiritual advisor who passed away. I didn't know there was hidden teachings in everything that was going on, right? I wasn't expecting for the old man to pass around and, and I was asked to step up, right? Um, but I found my way of life here in Hawaiian Gardens as far as connecting with my native roots, right? Becoming a wingman for the Bear Clan Society and being out there up and down the state, you know, blessing and doctoring people up like my uncle used to do, right? And as Jesus mentioned, like we, we could help put it all together, right? All we need is a green light, a go ahead, right? We could figure out how to do it. You know, we have communities out there that are willing to help and participate. I have people, every Bear Clan, uh, dance that we have, hey, what's gonna happen at Hawaiian Gardens? What's gonna happen at Hawaiian Gardens? I just would like to have a date, you know? I have nothing to tell these people and they're eager to come. They're eager to bring the medicine to the community, right? Cause that's what the Bear Clan does. Bring that blessing, bring the healing, right? So we can continue on and, and, and finish our year strong and starting our year strong, right? Um, but yeah, all we need is that green light. The community is eager to come, eager to participate and, and eager to give, you know? We've always learned that what you take is what you give and that's what we're all doing now. We're all just eager to give back. Thank you.
One last thing, I know that, um, when we talk briefly, on Thursday, August fourteenth, that's when the school year starts. So that way we could even include some of our schools, so hopefully to, uh, entice someone to attend to that. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza and Renee.
There are no members of the public on Zoom.
Next item, uh, proclamation and certificates. Tonight, we are so privileged that we are going to honor our scholars who are the recipients of this year's mayor's youth walk of achievement. I'd like my, to ask my council colleague to step down as we give the certificates and the cash incentives to them. Hello. Oh, there you go. So this is really monumental to many students and families here in Hawaiian Gardens that we are memorializing the achievement of their children. We'll continue the celebration. Like we mentioned today, you are the queen of the crop and we wanted to congratulate you. For the academics, we would like to request Kimberly Salazar to come up here. You will be receiving a certificate from the California State Senate and also a scholarship worth one thousand five hundred. Another recipient for the academics, we have Rosario Rocha Cienega. He are receiving a two thousand five hundred scholarship. And for the grand prize of this huge three thousand five hundred scholarship grant, we have David Secuentes. Also for academics. For the field of athletics, we have Janey Larios. He is receiving two thousand five hundred scholarship. Another recipient for athletics, we have the grand prize, Janice Scott. And she is receiving a three thousand five hundred scholarship. Janice mentioned earlier that she wanted to be a mayor and a lawyer someday. So you're looking at a future mayor of Hawaiian Gardens. David wanted to be an engineer and he should, he wanted to create, um, vehicles. So you'll be seeing a David engineering firm in Hawaiian Gardens with his creation. Now we're moving on to the civics. We have Omar Gutierrez for one thousand five hundred scholarship grant. The next recipient for the civics, we have Roberto Villacana. Roberto is a recipient of a two thousand five hundred scholarship grant. And the last one at the least for the civics, grand prize, scholarship grant winner or recipient is also the future mayor of Hawaiian Gardens and future lawyer, we have Joe Madrid. Again, let's give a big, big round of applause to our scholars. Our youth, our future. And also we would like to acknowledge their families who are here present tonight. Let's give them a big, big round of applause. Thank you so much. And the city of Hawaiian Gardens is very supportive of our youth. We are investing for their future and we are looking a bright future for Hawaiian Gardens because of these young individuals. Again, congratulations. You may take photos first and then for sure. Before we proceed, we're going to take a five-minute break. Item is presentation. We do not have presentation for tonight. Moving on to the agenda organization, this is a time for the city council to discuss any changes in the order of the agenda items. Would any council member like to make any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we're moving on to the public hearing. Public hearing number one, recommendation to hold a public hearing and receive and file the status of vacant positions report as required by California Assembly Bill two five six one. Is there a staff report?
There is. Our HR manager, Rosario Zoli, is gonna present it.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to present on the status of vacant positions as required by California A B twenty-five sixty-one, which was approved on September twenty-second of last year and became effective as of January first of this year. This new law requires public agencies like the city to present on the status of vacancies in a public hearing at least once per fiscal year and before the budget is approved. Please allow me to give you a little bit of background. I'm not gonna be using that presentation just yet. On Tuesday, April twenty-second, the city emailed both bargaining units, the management and rank and file, to notify the city's plan to hold a public hearing tonight, May fourteenth, in order to comply with A B twenty-five sixty-one. The city provided a deadline as of Wednesday, April thirtieth, to learn if the bargain, the bargaining groups wanted to participate tonight in case there were questions or requests that needed to be addressed before or during this meeting. On Friday, April twenty-fifth, when city hall was closed, the management bargaining unit emailed a list of questions to HR. On Monday, April twenty-eighth, HR provided the information that was requested. On Tuesday, May sixth, the city received an email where both bargaining units were included, requesting additional information regarding seven specific positions that have not been filled, three of them since twenty-twenty and four of them since twenty-twenty-four. In response to these additional inquiries, there are several factors that the city, the city has considered. Number one, the class income study conducted by the city, which started in twenty-twenty-three and concluded this year in March. This study provided an analytical perspective. And thanks to this study, departments and the city had the opportunity to reevaluate the way we work, how we do business, how the work is distributed, allocated, how responsibilities are assigned and aligned with. how responsibilities are assigned and aligned with strategic goals, et cetera. Staffing in twenty twenty four was indirectly impacted by the restructuring result from the class and comp study. It is also relevant to mention that some positions may be temporarily assigned to internal employees working in an out-of-class capacity. Some positions may also be in queue to be posted pending approval of a post-class and comp updated job description, which may be subject to a meeting confer with the union. Number two, in July of last year, just in July of last year, the city implemented a hiring freeze due to the unknown probable impacts of SB five forty nine, which poses a threat to the city's long-term financial security and the community we serve, with potential catastrophic consequences on our city's budget and the many public services we offer. Number three, the COVID nineteen pandemic, which started in two thousand and nineteen, severely impacted talent acquisition in the years to follow and forced many employers throughout all industries, including public agencies like the city, with to restructure and reassess their priorities and staffing levels with a goal of becoming more efficient. Other factors include the lack of qualified candidates that are willing to commit to onsite work, an increase in public sector employees retiring, and an overall shortage of professionals. Number four, and the last one, pursuant to the management rights section of the memorandum of understanding with each bargaining group, the city reserves the right to determine the size and composition of the workforce, determine processes, techniques, methods, and means of city operations, responsibilities, and functions, and to take action as may be necessary to organize and operate the city in the most efficient and economical manner and in the best interest it serves. Since this is not an action item and the purpose is informational only, the recommendation in this staff report is to simply note and file this report. Now, please allow me to use a few slides to address the summary section of this staff report. The present is an employee vacancy summary report in compliance with California AB twenty five sixty one. Introduction, AB twenty five sixty one went into effect January first of this year, as I mentioned before. This new law mandates that public agencies address and present information on the status of their job vacancies and recruitment and retention efforts once per fiscal year prior to finalizing the budget season. While AB twenty five sixty one does not obligate the agency to fill a vacancy or hire anyone, it generally concerns issues such as providing greater transparency, ensuring public participation in local government decisions, and improving public accessibility to information. In a nutshell, the purpose of this public hearing is to provide an update on the city's vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts in compliance with AB twenty five sixty one. As you can see on the table, updated as of May eighth of this year, there are twenty-six positions posted, and the status of each one of them is as follows. As you can see, there are two substitute crossing guards for the public safety department, eight seasonal lifeguards for recreation, thirteen seasonal recreation leader one for recreation as well, one administrative technician for the community development department, one senior clerk for finance, and one accounting manager for finance. I did not include here a column that states which bargaining unit these positions belong to. The only position that belongs to the management bargaining unit is the last one, the accounting manager position. All the others are rank and file. As you can see, the majority of these positions are part-time as well, with a couple of exceptions, the administrative technician for community development and the accounting manager for finance. AB twenty five sixty one also requires that the city must identify any necessary changes to policies, procedures, and recruitment activities that may lead to hiring obstacles. Staff has not identified any necessary changes at this time. The city continues to take steps in support of recruitment and retention. Some of these efforts include job advertisement in city boards and city website, which is synced to government jobs, also known as NeoGov, social media, and professional platforms as well. The class and comp and COLA adjustments incorporated into the budget updates, completion of the class and comp with job descriptions currently still under review, City Hall building renovations, including new carpeting, painting, and other employee upgrades and updates in technology, as well as a continuous focus on employee well-being. In conclusion, the purpose of this presentation is to comply with AB twenty five sixty one and to ensure transparency, accountability, and responsiveness regarding staffing practices. Upon request, additional information may be provided under AB twenty five sixty one if the vacancy rate within the bargaining unit ever drops to twenty percent of the total number of authorized full-time positions within that bargaining unit. Now, going back to that staff report, the fiscal impact, there is no fiscal impact associated with this status update, and the suggested action is to approve the recommendation. Now, before I conclude, please allow me to note for the record that this presentation and the staff report were reviewed with the city attorney's office and considered compliant with AB twenty five sixty one. As advised by the city attorney's office, in order to comply with AB twenty five sixty one, the city only needs to present on budgeted positions if they are truly vacant. A vacancy is a job that is both currently available and not held or occupied by an individual. If a certain position is not open, then it is not currently available and it is not considered vacant. Now, I open the floor for the representatives from each bargaining group to come up and present. If there are any questions, we can address them maybe at the end of their presentations. Thank you.
Ready? Good evening, mayor and members of the city council, city manager. My name is Louis Schmidt. I'm the business representative with AFSME District Council thirty-six, and I'm here representing the management unit of Hawaiian Gardens, but I'm also here in support of our rank and file unit, Local thirty-six twenty-four. So, one thing that's missing in that staff report is that this is a bill that AFSME sponsored last year. Why did we need, why was this bill necessary? Because what we're finding across the state of California, there was some public agencies that weren't filling vacancies adequately. They would delay it. They would try to blame it on budget. They would blame it on different types of factors. And what we saw in other agencies was we saw an outsourcing of public sector jobs. And so they would remain vacant, and then they would come and say, well, there's people working out of class, but that's not a long-term solution. So, we felt that this bill was not the ultimate solution, but it was a way to add transparency, as Rosario stated. It had some more transparency into how public agencies handle their vacancies. And so, tonight, we're just gonna do a small presentation from our executive board, from the management chapter, and we want to just give you our insight to what we're seeing, what we've seen in the last couple of years with the vacancies here. And to start us off, it'll be Kevin.
Thank you. Thank you, Louis. Good evening, mayors and city council. My name is Kevin Nguyen. I started working at the city. Let me take you to the next slide. I started working for the city of Hawaiian Gardens Community Development Department in the summer of twenty eighteen. When I joined the management unit back in twenty eighteen, we had about eighteen members. But if you could move to the next slide. Can you go back one more slide? Going back. Going back, okay. Okay, so we thank you. So, back in twenty eighteen, we had about eighteen members over the years. Memberships have been significantly reduced. As of today, we have about seven members. The biggest concern is with this position now being eliminated over the years. We have, you know, we have put in a lot of works over the years. I don't see how one employee or staff can do the job of three people, and that is the biggest concern. And that's gonna impact everybody's across the board. That's all I have to say. I'm gonna have Steve speak on the next slide. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. This is a slide you saw a few minutes ago when HR presented. Just a summary of the report that the city is gonna submit. And as mentioned, majority are from rank and file. Next one, Juan. There is one in management, which is the accounting manager that we wanted to bring to your attention. I had the easy slides. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. The slide that I'm presenting today is pretty much the positions that were established pre-COVID. These positions are essential to the agency's operations and the quality of service to the community. And one of the recommendations that our membership has is to encourage the council and management to revise or reevaluate the agency's succession plan, which is crucial to identifying, retain, and develop future leaders for our city of Hawaiian Gardens. Thank you very much.
And they gave me the hard slide. So, I am Siobhan Moore Cage. I am the political advocate for AFSME Local thirty-six, and I'm also a past vice president. But for the city, I'm the executive assistant to the city manager, mayor, and council. I love working here in the city, and I have the opportunity of being able to look at this situation in a bidirectional lens. I have been an employer and I have been an employee. So, I'm looking at this bidirectionally. And so, let's look at this slide. So, total number of vacancies in the bargaining unit that we see per our MOU is nine, and that's nine including the accounting manager's position that has been open for quite some time. First, there's the senior accountant, which, senior accountant position that was held by Connie Sapovida. She retired in January of twenty twenty, and so some of her duties were reassigned to our accountant, and no external or internal job posting has been done after that, after her retirement. And then in community development, there was a housing rehab supervisor, which was Gloria Thomas. Her employment ended in March of twenty twenty four, no internal or external job posted as well, and no out-of-class posted. However, the position's duties demoted to the housing technician three's position, and now that person is receiving out-of-class pay. We appreciate that for that employee, for that union member. In community development, there's also a community development specialist position that was held by Jamie Donaldson. She has been gone for quite some time as well. That was twenty twenty. No internal or external job posted after termination of her employment here. But her duties were reassigned to contracting services. So, there's consultants that are doing her job right now, and we would definitely like those duties to be given to a union member, an employee of the city. And so, we're just, we just want to point that out. In the recreation department, recreation supervisor Jesus Mendoza, as well as recreation supervisor Glenn Cornejo, they both retired, and now their duties have been spreaded among other supervisors. Well, there's only one supervisor now. So, that one supervisor and a few staff members are doing the duties of these two recreation supervisors. And so, we just want to make sure that these people are compensated. You know, there's some people that can take on multiple duties, and they can multitask, and they can take on this different type of workload, and they can handle it, but there's certain people that cannot. So, if it is somebody that is, you know, threatening increased workload and burnout, we wanna take a look at those things. So, we need to, you know, kind of stay in communication with each other so that we can notice, you know, if our employees are struggling. And I know you guys care about that. And also, in transportation, there's a transportation supervisor's position that was held by Anthony Corales. He retired in August of twenty twenty four. We really miss him. And again, no internal or external job posted after retirement, and that position is currently assigned as an out-of-class opportunity. Again, we thank you. We appreciate that you did that for one of our union members. And then in public safety, there's, again, senior admin analyst. That position is currently assigned as an out-of-class opportunity for one of our union members. We thank you for that as well. And then the last one is in administration. That's my wonderful department. And there is, there's been an admin analyst position. It's been vacant. It's been vacant for quite some time, but it's been in the budget since fiscal year twenty twenty-two until present. So, it's been in the budget twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. It's been in the budget, but the executive assistant confidential has absorbed most of the work from that. And so, we just want to make sure that our employees are taken care of. We appreciate the fact that our council did the class and comp study. We appreciate you. We do not want to take you for granted, but we do want everything to be transparent. And we want you to know that, you know, that we're, you know, we're watching. We want to work here. We want to stay here. A lot of us have opportunities to go other places, but we choose to stay here because we're in love with the city. And so, thank you for just allowing me to speak to you today. But let me just offer a few things. So, I talked about increased work, burnout, reduced efficiency when you are overloading one employee, limited career growth. If individuals perform at higher-level duties without official promotions, they may feel under, you know, under-valued. It may reduce motivation. It may reduce engagement. And so, sometimes, you know, we think that the only way that you can compensate an employee is by giving them a raise. Now, listen, we love raises. You know, everything is expensive right now. The economy is just in a place that I've never seen before. But there's different ways of compensating your employees for working hard. And so, of course, one of them is out-of-class pay adjustments. You are doing that. We thank you for that. Promotion opportunities, we've seen, you know, some people promoted, but not many. But another thing that we could do is bonuses, stipends, off Offering bonuses and stipends for additional duties can acknowledge their extra work. You know, people will appreciate that. Flexible scheduling, additional leave compensation doesn't always have to be financial. Offering additional PTO or flexible work arrangements can be valuable. Formal recognition and career pathing, recognizing employees publicly, setting up structured career advancement plans and ensuring that their extra contributions are acknowledged in performance evaluations. I have not had a performance evaluation since, oh, I can't even remember. Maybe 20, 2019, 2019. And I'm a stellar employee. When I started working in Hawaiian Gardens, there were five people in my department. Now there is only me. Thank you.
Thank you, Siobhan. Good evening. My name is Juan Serrano, the unit president for our local unit 36. And I'm one of those supervisors in recreation. Obviously, I'm thinking the longest employee in my unit, 30 years, even though I look the youngest. But that is true. Siobhan has a great point. I do. Look at them. Look, recreation, we had the biggest department. And I'm supervising about 30 plus employees. And the work is just me, you know? I, I talk to my director and we go over what can we do to improve employee morale? What can we do to, to make the community welcome to our department? But it's exhausting. It's, it's, it's a lot of work and it's just me. We lost two supervisors. We still vacant positions. So yes, Siobhan mentioned it. Thank you, City Council, for initiating the comp study. The intent was to obviously to have a competitive workplace, to retain and attract talent. Obviously, we're not. We're losing employees. And of course, we feel that the city did not follow the recommendation from the consultant and/or the AFSMI. We had negotiations. We met five times. And we're still waiting for the final draft to sign the contract. But we, we did not follow the recommendations of the consultant. Unfortunately, we have nothing to report. The city has not taken any actions to create new incentives to attract talented employees. And we have, we have lost employees. We have a council member sitting in the dais that was an employee with us. He applied for a position in finance. He ended up going somewhere else because obviously we couldn't detain him. The fact benefits have been reduced for new hires, which would not assist in attracting new talent employees. Some employees have left for better opportunities. And city lacks of feeling vacancies negatively impacts the community and keeps local jobs away from the community. And of course, you guys know that most of our city employees in recreation or public works live in the City of Hawaiian Gardens. So it's important for the economy in our city. So that's it. That's it for my presentation. I don't know if we'd like to have any closing statements.
Thank you, Juan, and thank you for everyone who spoke up today. Part of that legislation was asking what are, what are public employers doing to retain and attract employees, right? I heard something about carpet, right? But unfortunately, carpet is not going to attract employees. While we're thankful that the city is making internal upgrades, in order to attract talent, you have to focus on getting employees to come here. And we haven't seen anything. There was a reference made to COVID-19, how it made it difficult to attract employees. It did, but I haven't seen, we haven't seen it from our point of view, employees turning down jobs for the City of Hawaiian Gardens based on teleworking or anything like that. So we need to do something different here. Other public agencies are responding. They're not staying stagnant. And even though the casino is still the big elephant in the, in the room that could potentially impact the city in years to come, it doesn't mean that we have to stop providing the services to the community that everybody relies on. As Siobhan stated, there's a lot of out of class opportunities that are being made available, but those are being made available to the rank and file unit. The management chapter, as you had, as you can see, has reduced significantly. And unfortunately, the out of class opportunities are not, are not there. We're seeing more and more at will employees. This is not reflective of Hawaiian Gardens. Hawaiian Gardens has always been employee friendly and supportive employees' right to choose. And so if we don't attract and keep new talent here, then unfortunately, one by one, it's going to be less people up here. And this bill will be insignificant because the City of Hawaiian Gardens will become a contract city. And we don't want that. Because as that, as that last slide stated, the people that in the community that rely on these jobs will no longer have that opportunity because you're paying contractors to do the work who don't live in the community, who cost the city more money and take away jobs from the community. So we thank you for this opportunity to speak to you guys. And we look forward to working with the city manager and the city council to keep Hawaiian Gardens, you know, going in the positive direction. Thank you very much. And then Armando is going to speak from rank and file.
Sorry, I just had to say something. I retired from, from the management unit as a supervisor. And I think it's disrespectful just to see those two openings still and to throw all that work upon one supervisor. All of you guys up there, except for the attorney and maybe our city clerk, knew my work ethics and seen everything that I've done for the city, the 35, 36 years that I was here. And I think it's, it's very harsh to see that all those assignments, everything that I was doing, it takes for granted and try to throw it onto one supervisor. So that only tells me that someone else is doing part of that job, which is a violation of the MOUs. So please, you know, listen to what they're putting out there. Because I think it's, it has a lot of truth to it. Because we can't say, you know, we keep saying this, saying our youth are future, but we don't allow our own kids, you know? Mayor Dandy was saying, two of the kids, they want to be attorneys or they want to be the mayors and all that. How? If we don't give them a chance? How are we going to do that if we don't give them a chance? And that's what we're doing. I go, before it was a plus, you know, Councilmember Roa knows because we didn't have, we didn't have benefits. When he came on board, we had benefits for part timers. And it was because of the council. Seeing that the majority of our workers and staff were Hawaiian Gardens residents. You know, we have our crossing guards. You seen what happened to that crossing guard when they got here? Then we were all saying, how can we assist? How can we help? Okay, what happened to her? And that's, that's what we're asking. I go, is, if you want to say our youth are future, then believe in it, then, then do it. Because I think it's in your heart. It's just a matter of, hey, let's sit down with them, work it out, and I think, wait, it could be done. I go, but don't, don't take it as a, as a negative thing, what they're asking for. I think it's something positive because Clarkdale hasn't been open for a long time. There's no staff. I live two blocks from there. Councilman, you guys live two blocks, three blocks from there. You see all the kids. You see all the teams. Let's, let's act instead of waiting until after the fact. And I think that if we do that, the units are willing to work with you guys. And you know, when that was put on the union contract about working out of class, it was done for a reason. Not misinterpreted, however you guys want to misinterpret. It was done for a reason so that we would give an opportunity for all our kids that are growing up to give that chance in order to see if they could do that. Then any supervisor, any manager could say, you know what? I'm sorry, but we tried you and you can't do the job. And without giving that chance, how are we going to do that? And if it's not our city, what city? The City of Lakewood? Cypress, Long Beach, La Palma? It's our Hawaiian Gardens, remember that. And that's what you guys believe in. So I appreciate that. I just wanted to say, because like I said, I believe in the union from day one when they first got here. And now that I've retired, I still believe in them. I still work at UPS. I'm a teamster over there. And, you know, that doesn't mean that we don't work hard. Get away from the misconception that, you know, unit members don't work hard. We do. We do. We just want to fight for what we believe in and asking for support. So I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Armon Soto. I'm president of unit 3624 Rank and File. So I'm going to share some information that we gathered as a, as a unit regarding to the vacancies that we're talking about. So we have one vacancy of administrative assistant out of two. This is a city hall position. We have a vacancy in the senior accountant, which may be absorbed with, with the posted position of finance manager position. We have a vacancy that's executive assistant in the CDD department. We have a vacancy administrative technician. This one is posted. Some of them are posted, some of them are not. This one's vacant for over a year. We have a vacancy in the senior administrative analyst. It's not posted. We have a vacancy in the housing. We have supervisor not posted for over a year now. We have two vacancies in the transportation department as bus drivers for over a year. I'm sorry, I have one vacancy there. And then we have one transportation supervisor, supervisor vacancy. We also have two maintenance workers vacancies. And no posting. We have a, like they mentioned, two recreation supervisors. One vacant for over two years and the other one for over a year. We have public safety officers. We have two vacancies. And we have a contracted parking enforcement officer. We have also several recreational vacancies. And so this is some of the information that we gathered relating to the vacancies. The city has moved to employ temporary staff and consultants in the place of vacant employees' hell positions. I would like to say that we as a union stand against contracted consultants because it takes from the opportunity to, to provide employment to possibly a committee member. As these vacancies stand, our employees are overworked because there is no decrease in services or programs. And I'll be honest, some of our participation has gone down in numbers from formative years because of the lack of quality, lack sometimes of quality of leaders. Because we don't attract the same quality of employees for the reasons that were stated in the May 14 memo. Also, the number of employees, classic employees, has been lowered year, year to year. And then new full-time employees have new, have health benefit caps and part-time employees must also reach a threshold to qualify a minimum benefit. So I understand that the city has instituted some cost-saving policies, but that has also contributed to, to the lack of quality candidates as far as employment. I would also might like to comment on the memo dated May 14, 2025, along with the staff report. Number one stays that three out of the four vacant positions the union brought to the attention are being filled with city out of class employees. I would like to point out, when we have an out of class opportunity and the lead staff or head department, department head goes out, that provides an out of class opportunity. And somebody else steps in to fill that position. And it creates a domino effect because somebody needs to step in into that position. That domino effect is not happening. Sometimes we get the out of class opportunities. That domino effect always leaves, leaves cracks where a lot of services suffer. The duties and the, the duties of the positions that are being filled by the out of class opportunities don't have an end date. So we've had out of class opportunities for over in close to two years. So I, I have expressed my, my, hopefully, you guys do something about it and fill those positions. Item number two in the staff report mentions a hiring freeze. That's unclear for us because obviously it was mentioned that some positions have been hired. And so somewhere somehow has decided that those positions are essential. From our unit's standpoint, if that position exists, they're all essential. So let's try to move it and try to fill all the positions. I know there's a lot of information. Some of it might be inaccurate. Some might be disagreeable. But the only thing I'm asking is for you to look into it. If you have questions, maybe these are questions that can be answered, answered here. But I invite you to work with the union, not just here right now. But later on, if you have questions, again, I can try to answer them. If you want to correct me on something, I'll, I'll be glad to meet and talk to any of you guys. And so if you have any questions in, in the future, sure, reach out to the union. Thank you.
We appreciate those updates and reports. Is there any discussion?
So I have a lot of questions. We might be here for a while, so I'll shorten it. I guess in some of your questions from, from the union regarding, I guess, contract services. Do you have a list of those? Does somebody know? Someone I could talk to up here? Who, who could that be? Yeah, I have some questions for you. Can you, can you get a rep up here? So some of this information is new, new to me that you're bringing up. I was kind of aware of some of the things. But I think maybe in discussion, we might be able to kind of look at things in, in a way that I think is open to everyone. So you mentioned contract workers, right?
Yeah, I, I said that we as a union, we don't support contract or.
Do you have a, a number of how many?
I, I don't, I don't.
But we can give you a few, a rough estimate. I know in finance, there's two contract employees. And I'm sure you've seen it because you walk through finance all the time. Two contract employees.
More than two?
Two in finance department. In the community development, I believe two or three contract employees. Those are union positions.
Member Vargas, we can provide you a list tomorrow. It's not a problem.
Yeah, no, I, I just have questions from my own.
But there is a lot of contract employees doing the work of a union employee. Answer your question.
So in, in the nine positions, so if looking at our budget or our current situation, have you taken that in consideration? Let's just use the scenario.
Yes, in terms of the budget, you are paying the contract employee. Just that you would pay a union employee.
Not the contract. I'm just saying, if we filled all the nine positions that you say that need to be filled, our budget and everything, taking into consideration in the future, we as a council look at the budget and we are looking at the future and what we have now and what will we have in five years? So in management is trying to look at that very, you know, at a, at a, at a point where we're, where we are financially right now and where will we be in the future? And depending the situation with the lawsuit to the casino. So let's just look at, so you're asking us to fill these nine positions. Am I correct?
Well, we're asking the city to look at those positions that are union positions, to fill them out and, and hire union employees. Eliminate the contract employees.
You mentioned quality employees. You're not getting quality employees that you have now?
You're talking about the contract employees?
Oh, just quality. It's, that was mentioned, that, you know, you're, you're looking for new talent, quality employees to be in the city?
Correct.
I can't comment on that. I'll tell you that pre-pandemic, we used to attract older individuals, more mature individuals, more responsible. And now these individuals, at least the age has come down considerably. And so in that sense, yeah, I, I would say that it goes along quality.
What, what would be the reason for that? Would you say it's our?
I, I would say it's a pay cut. I, I would say it's a pay cut competency. I know inflation has a lot to do with it and not, it's not completely on you guys, but trying to provide a competitive pay. Most of us start at the bottom as reg leaders, and so there is where I see the biggest, the biggest issue when, when it comes to that.
So those, these quality people that we're looking for that come and apply, they don't stay or they don't get hired because of the pay?
I think we don't attract them anymore. I don't think we're attracted as an employer, not as before.
Based on what?
On, on the fact that we are attracting younger employees and, like I said, not as mature, not as responsible, not as knowledgeable.
Do you, do you have those numbers on how many have applied since this?
So I can give you one quick example, just a very quick example.
If I may, excuse me, if I may. Yeah, so, you know, it's a public hearing, the, from purposes of today is to report on vacancies. You know, as, as you know, with members of the public, we don't want to get into a back and forth. If you have a specific question to staff that you need clarification, now would be the time to do that or for discussion, but, but this wouldn't be the time to get into a back and forth with the bargaining units. They've had their time to make their presentations and so...
Maybe in a closed session, we could discuss it.
Yeah, this would not be appropriate for here. Yeah, so they've had their opportunity to have their presentation and so the recommendation is to receive and file the report. If you have specific questions to staff, you can make those.
But, but just very quick, I think you appreciate it.
If there's something, yeah, if there's something's very specific you want to clarify, that's, that, you know, you have a clarifying question, that would be appropriate.
Well, up to the question that I asked, I clarified it. That's where, if I got to stop now, we'll stop with this discussion as a council.
And, and may I, obviously, you know, most of us, we live in the City of Hawaiian Gardens, we were the youth of the future. I was part of the SYUP program back in 1992. Our goal, and obviously as a union, it's just fair wages and a fair contract. We understand the situation with the casino lawsuits. We understood the COVID situation. We understood the 1997 layoffs that we went through. We know all of these. We would not want to put a burden on the city to not be fiscal responsible. We understand that. But you also have to help us out. There's plenty of positions that are vacant, they're not being filled by union positions, and they're being filled by contract employees. That's about all I have.
That's been stated in the, in the presentation. Thank you.
My, my, I would like to just make a final comment. The information I gave you, those are numbers that are pre-pandemic. I think there's been a lack of communication as far as communicating us, Rank and File, and our, our members, the situation pre-pandemic and post-pandemic. As much as, as, as much as we all live it every day, I think there's been a lack of communication in that sense.
See, we'll go further from here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to open the public hearing for public comment.
There are no members of the public on Zoom.
There being no comments, the public hearing is now closed. We have a motion to receive and file.
To receive and file? I'll second.
Councilmember Farfin?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth? Councilmember Vargas?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaula?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item, consent calendar. Does any council member want to pull any agenda items from the consent calendar for
If we could please pull item five, it's just for a quick comment.
So item five, recommendation to receive and file the current donation policy relating to local, local schools.
So could I then make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar with the exception of item five?
And I second that motion.
Roco, please.
Councilmember Farfin?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas? Mayor Pro Tem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaula?
Yes.
Yeah, so the, the item was placed on the agenda at Councilmember Roth's request.
The only reason I placed this item on the agenda or was asked if we could take a look at it is in the past, we'd had the opportunity to meet with the finance department and basically allocate a certain amount for us to assist the schools and then we subdivided those amounts into, I don't know, $5,000 for FEDI, $6,000, whatever the different schools are that are in our jurisdiction. Lately, we've had the schools actually come in and, and request funding or specific item purposes. So it's not clear to me if those items are part of this donation policy or if that is in addition to.
We are treating them as if they are part of this donation policy. That's how we have been processing them, but you are correct in that we, we didn't identify a certain amount for each of the schools. Typically, we make mention of it during our Southeast Collaborative Meetings we have, where when all the principals come up, we, we let them know there's a donation policy in place and they could request donations, and most of them are pretty good at it.
And I know the fiscal year, well, and the reason being is that I know the fiscal year is almost over, but we didn't have a lot of the schools come up. And I mean, I know there's always a need, but I would encourage, if somehow we could put it in our policy, that some of these requests come from the actual students or the organizations that service within that school. We had a perfect example. Artesia High School was having a graduate night. We had a student from their ASB actually reach out to one of our staff members, but by the time they reached out to us, it was a little too late. Ernesto did everything possible for us to be a partner. But I think that that's, that's an opportunity for the students to actually learn about fundraising and seeking out their funds, and they're actually the ones that can prioritize what are some of the things that are important to it. My concern really is that once we hand over to the money to the school and the principals, they get to, and I, I know they're out for the best of their community, but they get to decide where they spend it. And sometimes that's not necessarily what the kids would like to see. This event that happened, fortunate the casino and other agency stepped out, stepped to help out, but it's, it was a very large event at Artesia High School. And they always get fed and this time, the parents get fed and this time, they, the students didn't believe that it, that, that there was enough funding for it. So hopefully, had they reached out to us, we, we would have hopefully been able to help. But I think that, especially at the high school, I know we have Artesia High School, some kids even have Cerritos and, and Tracy. The kids know or can prioritize what is important to them, and I think that's where we can show our support to some of those organizations. So I don't know, maybe we could look at how much we're spending and what's available and if we could add in there that, you know, we want the donation to come from, like, the students themselves or from a group within the organization, rather than just like, here's $5,000 and we don't know what it really gets used to.
I can share with you that we have run into the, the issue at Artesia High School where, I guess, at that point in time, a couple of years ago, Sergio relied on the ASB, the Student Body Club, to decide how they were going to utilize that request. Well, we had multiple requests coming from different sources from the same high school, so it, it became an issue at that school because there were so many groups wanting a piece of the donation.
So that's why I think if we say, you know, on a fiscal year, we have a maximum of $5,000, $7,000 that we could donate to the high school, and the high school can say, hey, this is available from the City of Hawaiian Gardens. If you guys have any, an event, your student body president or plan accordingly, because it's not a competitive basis, but it just kind of feel, if we just allow them to come to us, they're, they're going to be...
Right.
Yeah, and I'd like to add also, maybe in, in the application process, we could set a date every school year if we are really determining, you know, like providing funds for the schools. Let's say, for example, at the beginning of the school year, we set a date by, in the month of December, they submit a proposal to the city, and then since it's competitive, if we have two applications from Artesia High School, then we have to decide which one really benefits the Hawaiian Gardens residents the most. So I think setting a date and having that clear parameters, that would really help us in, you know, in deciding on which school and, and what particular organization that we're going to support. I'm looking at the application requirements and I think, I know we're very flexible in that, but I think setting a date would be added to the language.
We'll, we'll make some recommended changes and bring it back to you guys, and we'll incorporate the key points you made tonight.
That's all I have. Thank you.
So we need a motion? I'll make the motion.
I second.
Councilmember Farfin?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas? Mayor Pro Tem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaula?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item, discussion item, we have one tonight. Discussion item number one, recommendation to adopt resolution number 006-2025, identifying the street improvements project and adopting the list of projects for fiscal year 2025, 2026 funded by SB1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. Is there a staff report?
Good evening, councilmember and city man, city mayor. I just wanted to provide this update about the road maintenance and rehabilitation account, RMRA, funding that we receive every year from SB1 funding. And this item is a request for the, in the resolution that we need to send to the CTC every year so they can provide these fundings to us. The city is projected to receive $352,000 in SB1 funds in fiscal year 2024, '25 that can be used for the fiscal year 25, '26 street improvement project. In order to be eligible for the local streets and roads fiscal year 2025, '26 program apportionment, cities and counties must submit an adopted list of projects to the California Transportation Commission pursuant to Street and Highway Code Section 2034A. The fiscal year 2025, '26 residential street improvement project is funded by a combination of CDBG, Measure R, and Measure M funds, and it's estimated to receive an additional $365,000 from SB1 funds in fiscal year 2025, '26. Pursuant to Street and Highway Code Section 2034, prior to receiving an apportionment of funds, each city or county is required to have identified RMRA eligible capital projects in a budget, in a budget adopted by the city council. In order for the city to receive said RMRA funding for fiscal year 25, '26, the city council must adopt a resolution. Additionally, each city must submit a list of proposed streets repairs to the California Transportation Commission. If Bashir can show the presentation that I have from the project maps, I can show you the previous projects that we had in the past, you know, four, five years in the city and show the progress and our recent adopted pavement management program, which will help us a lot with identifying the streets. So staff is proposing to apply $360,000 of SB1 funds to the fiscal year 25, '26 street improvement project and identify the project as an RMRA eligible project. Unfortunately, it's, yeah, it's working now. Okay, thank you. If you can change the view to full screen. It's in the corner of the screen. Thank you. So this slide shows all the improvements that we did in the past five years, including the next two projects that we have, that we're working on them. So as you can see, most of the streets have been resurfaced in the past 40 years, based on the improvements that we did. We slurry sealed most of the local streets and we're going to grind and overlay Carson Street. We did the east part of Carson and now we're focusing on Norwalk Boulevard in the next six months. Right now, on the, our Norwalk Boulevard project between Carson Street and Central Elia is under construction. And this is our five-year pavement management program that you adopted on February 12, 2025. So any streets that they were listed in the pavement management program and they had some deficiencies, now we're focusing on those segments. So based on this proposed plan, now we identify five, seven residential and collector streets for this project. And as I said, the following streets were selected as part of the pavement management program adopted by the city council on February 12 and have been identified as eligible for SB1, CDBG, Measure R, and Measure M funding for the fiscal year 25, '26 residential street rehabilitation project. First street is Civic Center Drive from Pioneer Boulevard to Norwalk Boulevard. Second, 221th Street from St. Avenue to Juan Avenue. Third street is 214th Street from Elaine Avenue to Norwalk Boulevard. Fourth street is 222nd Street from Belchar Avenue to Wartam Avenue. Our fifth street is 221st Street from Joliet Avenue to Norwalk Boulevard. Sixth street is Farlow Street from Colareta Avenue to End of the cul-de-sac. And the last street is Wartam Avenue from 221st Street to 224th Street. Staff recommends allocating $360,000 SB1 funds to the fiscal year 25, '26 street rehabilitation project and designating the project as eligible under the road maintenance and rehabilitation account. And this concludes my presentation and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank, thank you, Nima, for your diligence and for the dedication that you put in, in the work. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I second.
Councilmember, Member Farfin?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth? Councilmember Vargas? Mayor Pro Tem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaula?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item for the discussion, we have a recommendation to approve a donation to Artesia High School. Do you have a staff report?
Yeah, so this item was, we had a meeting with the city of Hawaii earlier today. We did receive a letter requesting monetary donation and as a result of that letter, which there was in the, there was going to be an attempt to place it on the special meeting of April 30th, but unfortunately, we had to cancel that meeting. That's why it's here on this agenda today for your consideration. Sergio Garcia, during the small break, did contact me and the casino was only able to provide $3,000 for that event. So this staff report, we're requesting for you to authorize this.
Is there any discussion?
It was actually, like I said, we were reached out, one of the, I think it's the ASB president reached out to our staff, then our staff forwarded to us. And it was just to help with some of the expenses for, for that, for a very large event. And I think the event usually takes about two hours and in the past, they've fed all the families and this year, unfortunately, it was too late, so they did not have that opportunity to do that.
Yeah, there was a good faith effort on behalf of staff to try and contact the caterer that could do it, like, within two days and it, because it was a much larger group, they weren't able to do it.
They opted to provide desserts and refreshments for the students and their families.
Yeah, I've been to this event in Artesia High School, and I think this is to commemorate the, you know, the achievement of our students there. And then it's a send-off party for them when they go to, before they go to college. It's very, it's a great ceremony, and then the combination of families and relatives and students are there. And it's a great start as they begin college. Is there any?
Nothing else. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Let's approve the full 1,500.
And if I could just quickly share, Bashir did remind me that we do have the donation policy and process on the website. But we will incorporate that as well into the amended policy.
Councilmember Farvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Roa? Councilmember Vargas? Mayor Protem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaula?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item, new business. Is there any new business? Oral staff report.
Yes, good evening, mayor and city council. Just a couple announcements regarding some upcoming events from our Recreation Department. This Saturday, May 17th, we'll be hosting, well, the ATGM, our Alternative to Gangs membership program, will be hosting its first annual teen summit here at the Sea River Lee Activity Center. It's this Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We'll be bringing a group of teens who participate in our ATGM program and teen center to host a variety of different workshops and guest speakers, ranging from Selico, the Sheriff's Department, and local principal from FEDI, and some local residents who have success in their career growth. Again, Saturday, May 17th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. here at the Sea River Lee Activity Center. In addition, on Memorial Day, Monday, May 26th, we'll be hosting our Memorial Day Remember and Honor Event. It'll be located at the City Hall parking lot. Also, on Memorial Day weekend, Saturday, May 24th, we'll be opening registrations for our youth swim classes. Swim lesson registration will be available online and also at the Lee Ware Pool office. Thank you.
Joe, is the date, it's gonna be on Monday? I thought in the last year was on Friday, right?
So Memorial Day is, on actual Memorial Day, Veterans Day was on Friday.
Thank you. Do you have city attorney report?
Nothing for me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You have oral counsel report? I'd just like to say, I wanted to greet our Public Works Department. It's National Public Works Week, and want to appreciate all the hard-working people in our department in ensuring the safety, health, and functionality of our community. So again, thank you so much, and enjoy your National Public Works Week next week. Next item, closed session. Will the city attorney please read the closed session item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council will now recess to closed session pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957.6. The representative for the agency is the city manager, and for the employee organization is 3624 Management Union Unit.
City council will recess to closed session at 7:38 p.m. The City Council meeting has reconvened from closed session at 8:04 p.m. Will the City Clerk please conduct a roll call?
Councilmember Farfan?
Here.
Councilmember Roa is here too. Councilmember Vargas? Mayor Protem Del Rio?
Here.
Mayor DePaula?
Here.
We have the call.
Will the City Attorney please report out of closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session, all members being present. They heard the items identified on the agenda, and no final reportable action was taken. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There being no further business, I hereby join this meeting at 8:05 p.m. to the next council special meeting to be held on Thursday, May 22nd, 2025, at 6 p.m. Have a great night.